Hello, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting for September 5th, 2017. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Some of...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment and have Dr. Lepri speak on behalf of Dr. O'Neill, who unfortunately we heard today had passed away. And Dr. Lepri was actually on the school committee while he was the superintendent of our district.
I think John had a tremendous career, both in the military. He was very proud of that. He was very proud about working very early on with Kennedy, who was it, that ran the Peace Corps? Because he was involved very, very early on in that. It was another thing, because if he sat down with them long enough, he'd show you pictures of him in a tank, him at the coast guy, I meant down in Puerto Rico, working with the Peace Corps. And he was in there for three years. And it was something he was very proud of. And then he eventually came here. Now, there aren't many of you that remember John at his best, but having been on school committee, it was a very different time. Some of you may know that this high school got built, and John did not particularly consult a whole lot of people about funding. He just did it and knew it'd work. And this is really a monument to his foresight in building the school. He was also just a generally nice guy. We used to deal with the, at that time, the school committee scholarships. And it was in a pre-FAFSA era. And so it was done on a blackboard, and it was done in about 20 minutes. And it was done very, very nicely and quickly. He was a wonderful guy to work with as a superintendent. And he was a tremendous credit to his family. He was a graduate of Holy Cross, and I think this town and this school are much better for his being here.
Thank you, Dr. Lepri. And on behalf of the school committee, we'd like to offer our condolences to his family. And perhaps our secretary could send a sympathy card on our behalf. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to comments from the public. All right. Presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee. Facilities project update. Could we have Diane come up here and join us, please? Thank you. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
You look good. Great first day.
Yes.
Successful?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Coase-Ward asked me to do a little update of facilities projects from the spring and the summer. We didn't just do the school. We did a lot of work this summer, and in the spring, it's quite amazing how much got done. The hallway painting of the middle school, I think it makes it look like a brand-new school. Dr. Cohen had the really great idea to remove the double-tier lockers, to put a single set of lockers in, and there's now a chopping block shelf, so the students can go out into the hall and work standing, work on their Chromebooks. It really looks beautiful. I am really, really impressed with how it came out. Hans Delgarde did that job, did a great job. We added some doors to the elementary school for the special ed and for the community school. And we had to do AI phones, which is the security phones. And we put card readers on the outside of those doors. The back parking lot of the high school, middle school, was completely redone. It was ground down to really dirt and repaved. It looks beautiful. We had it restripped, just to get ready for school. The auditorium, we replaced the second level of seating, so that involved taking the old seats out. The floor had to be ground down and epoxied, and then the new floors had to be installed, all by different vendors. That was a great project. I'm so thrilled to get that completely done. And the auto shop lifts, which is still underway, they're actually installing the lifts right now. I was just in there before I came in here. That should be completed by the end of the week, and I just feel like we got it locked up this summer. We all worked together, and we were a great team. And thank you, everyone.
Very, very impressive. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Diane? I just would love to say, the CPS, I love the new lockers. It's such a clean look. And the painting of the walls.
We may continue next year into the high school.
Yeah.
With Dr. Buck's permission.
Very nice.
It looks great. It makes it look brand-new.
It really, really does. Absolutely. Well, thank you for all of your work. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our FY 2018 draft budget planning calendar.
So just, this is something that I typically bring in October and a little bit ahead, but it gives you an idea of the dates coming up. We'll bring it back a second time for any action by the school committee. I think, looking forward, you can see that typically it's the months of September, October, November is when they're building the budgets at the building level or department level, and with the input of the school councils. And then we start presentations generally to the school committee in the beginning of December. So on, at the first session in December, we will have facilities, technology, and the community school. And then the second session, generally, we have the, all the other school budgets, so that we can have things wrapped up in January, early February. We typically make the report to the finance committee. All the while, we're doing, having meetings with the capital committee. And in fact, Diane and I have a meeting tomorrow on capital projects with Libby. So it's underway. Building administrators pretty much know the drill, and I did put in some dates on school councils there that I think are good dates, but there's a lot of TBD that you'll see, and those are all dates determined by Libby Gibson. So as soon as I have them, probably won't bring you this to vote on until I have those, so the vote might not be at the next meeting on it.
Thank you.
Right now, I'm hearing April 4th for the, or April 3rd for annual town meeting, which is a little different. I think it's a Tuesday night, not a Monday night, when we go during the week, and not a Saturday. So stay tuned on that. We'll see.
That would be a school committee meeting.
Could be. Yep. So we'll see once Libby weighs in with that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mike about the budget development? Okay. Summer programming. Hello?
Hello?
Andrea Marr. You're just going to stand here?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Would you prefer us to go sit down?
Wherever you guys are comfortable.
All right.
So let me just preface by saying that, and we've talked to the school committee before, the offerings for summer school are extensive. I can remember six or seven years ago, Tim saying, "Well, why aren't we offering more?" And we've added more every year. Someday, maybe not in my tenure, school will go year-round. And it's not happening here, but I would venture to say that it is happening here, just not in the, in the formal sense of getting rid of summer vacation. But we'll see. A lot of children being educated in the summer.
See some smiling faces down there. Happy that she's graduating.
Well, happy that she's graduating, right. And Andrea, and Michael, and our special ed department all have roles in it, but we hired Andrea to be the coordinator this summer, and glad that we did.
Thank you.
So I'm Andrea Marr. I was the summer school coordinator. I've been doing this role for several years, and different, looked a little different from year to year. Last summer, I was not on campus during the summer, but this summer I was. And that was actually a really great experience again, and I got a lot of positive feedback from the staff. They're happy to have me back, so I appreciate your kind words, too. We ran programs for pre-K through 12, and we had 140 students at NES, and 43, in addition to 55 students at CPS and NHS. And to teach those students, we had 23 teachers, five specialists, which include occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech and language. We had a reading specialist, and we had the options teacher on consult for an hour a day. So all of those people came together, in addition to 19 teaching assistants, and then I was there this summer as well. Also in the buildings, we had the community school with 43 students, four teachers, and two and a half teaching assistants. And Caitlin and I were talking earlier about how great it was that we got to get all of those students in this summer. And that was through collaboration with Michael Horton and the community school together. They worked together to make sure that all the students that we really felt needed to get the support this summer, we were able to get that. The community schools boost program is for students mostly, and Caitlin, correct me if I'm wrong, who have not attended preschool programs. Most of those students take the bus in, and they worked with like, like four of the really great teachers this summer. We're really happy with what we're seeing.
And I would just like to add, Michael Horton made it happen with knowing the resources to have the third class. It made a huge difference.
This year, our program looks a little bit different. We kept it at three hours a day, so it was in the mornings, but instead of three days a week, it ran for four days a week, for five weeks. There were a couple of things behind that change. One of them was the way the holiday fell. It worked out better, so we actually got two extra instructional days than we have had in the past. So we had 20 instructional days this year instead of 18. It was a good length of time. We were kind of looking at trends, like attendance trends, like are people not coming on the Monday? Because that was an addition. And it was inconsistent. Like, I couldn't draw any conclusions that Monday was well-attended or not. So, but the staff had feedback both ways, that the five weeks was good, the four days a week was good, and some people said, "We want the three days back." So it was really split down the middle. So, you know, I'm sure the administrative team will have that discussion, decide what works best. These are just some pictures of our students and our classes. We had, we actually were really fortunate this summer. We had a lot of veteran teachers come and teach for us. That's Mrs. Eloise in the bottom photo. She and Mrs. Holgate taught together. And it was really great to have all these veteran teachers on staff, can just like, pick up where they left off and go. So, so in addition to the academic programs in grades K through 12, we had pre-K and IDSC programs. And one of our other veteran teachers is here, who, you're a little shout-out back there, who ran the pre-K program. And we're always very excited to have her. Makes everything go smoothly with her expertise and knowledge of all those students. In their programs, they do a lot of structured play, technology integration, social skills. You might see them out on the playground, and they're working on their PTOT, their language-building skills, all of those really important things that happen during their school day. The grade K to 8 academic programs happened at NES and NHS, and we had a lot of really great programs going this summer. You can see that larger class, that's not a typical-sized class up on the right, upper right-hand corner, that's Mrs. Eloise and Mrs. Holgate. They were like, "Let's experiment and have everybody together." They really wanted the team teach. And they had some really positive feedback. They felt like it was effective for them. They kind of said it wouldn't work for everybody, but it definitely worked for them, because they have similar teaching styles. So that was a good experience for all those students, and they had the chance to teach second graders going to third, so some of their summer school students they have in their class now. So it was kind of nice, at the new building. You can see a lot of them, they had that person to connect to who they already knew. So that was definitely a positive of them teaching this summer. This is just the breakdown of what the programs look like at NES. You can see there was one kindergarten section, and actually, there are actually two, but one of them is categorized as an ELL section down below. So there were two groups of kindergarten students. As I said before, there was the boost program, there was the pre-kindergarten program, a couple of grade ones. Grade three had, and grade five had lower enrollment overall, so we reallocated a section to somewhere where more students were interested. Several, more students were invited, but we only had 11 students in grade three who were going to, who said they would attend, and 13 students in grade five. So we've had it down to one section. I kind of already talked about, in addition to the classroom teachers, we have all of the therapies and specialists who are on staff this summer. So some pictures of our students at work. So one of our, you might recognize our own friend, Amy Wigan, in the bottom right-hand corner. She's a reading specialist, now a Metta Poiza, but she was with our district for years. So we're happy to have her back. So if you see some familiar faces, I think she's actually in here twice. I was so excited to have her. I was looking at it earlier, and I was like, "Oh, she's here twice." This is an example of the academic day for grades K through 5. Integrated vocabulary or language throughout the day, especially in their morning meeting. We encouraged integrating reading and math into those as well. Students in many classes tried, well, the teachers, I guess, tried out some of the Eureka math units, which Michael Horton's going to talk about a little after that. Some teachers had experience with in the past, and Michael said, you know, "We have these Eureka units," and some people were like, "I'll try it." So some of the students got like a sneak peek of Eureka, some got a review, because I think some students had received it before. So that was kind of a new, interesting twist in the summer. I think worked really well. I think most of them focused on fractions.
Upper grades.
And the upper grades. And that, just fractions is kind of neat, because it encompasses all sorts of different skills, additions in there, and all sorts of other things. In writing, they did, most people did the writing units when they were appropriate. Those were created a few years ago, based on Lucy Calkins' units of study. And some people went on, went on their own path there. Guided reading was a big component. Teachers were, suggested they did a whole group lesson, and then follow it up with small groups of reading instruction, like the students are accustomed to. And that way, they could target strategies of the students' instructional levels in those small groups. There's some more students at work. You can see technology integration. Thank you, Karen and your team. We really couldn't do it without you. Technology's become a huge thing. I think I say it every year, more and more, between the smartboards, the network, the Chromebooks, it's really important to have that as part of the summer program. Karen McGonigal's team being on staff during the summer is really important, and really, really helpful to us. So thank you again. Some more small group. You can see the Chromebooks sitting there. Some more lovely, lovely photos. More technology. Kind of talked about these already. In addition to the writing unit binders and the math Eureka, all the teachers received a reading resource binder. And that was just, it has ideas for instructional practices. It has lists of books that you could use to teach certain strategies, really just things that, when you flip through, you'd be like, "Oh, aha, let's do this." And then to support those, they had access to our, our normal Nantucket Elementary School bookroom and our summer school collection of guided reading books. So they have lots of materials. That's something we've really, like, built up over the years. Michael Horton and myself have really been building up the supplies for the summer school, which is really great, because I had somebody come back this year, and she's like, "We didn't used to have all these, these supplies and these materials. This is really great." So those things are really going to good use. If you ever come by in the summer, you'll see, you know, all the things, and people are very excited to have them and putting them definitely to use. The CPS and NHS programs, while smaller, are equally as important. The NH, I'm going to start, just go backwards. The NHS programs are just special education, and that's why, when you look at grades 9 through 12, you see four students. Those are students who have the services dictated by their IP. Some years, we've had as little as one student in that group. So four students was actually a pretty high number for that. The ELL program was expanded this year. I think it was actually suggested here that we add that, if we try to include the high school students. And Eileen Taveras up at the high school, and Jackie, whose name I always mix up.
That's your Maria?
That one. Yep. They did a really great job getting those students in, connecting with the community, connecting with the students. So it was really great, and Jackie actually taught one of the classes and did a great job with it. In grades 6 through 8, we had inclusive classrooms. We had a, we did a little differently this year. Michael Horton organized an ELL teacher and a math teacher to lead those sections, and they taught the two main sections. They taught their subject, and then the students switched. And then there was a third class taught by another teacher that was, that students had different needs than the students that were switching classes. So it actually turned out to be a great model. And everybody, whenever I was up there, all the students seemed very engaged. So those six right teachers seemed to do a really good job. Algebra Part 1, I think, Michael Horton already talked to you guys about it at a past meeting, and the independent study, those were additional programs this summer. It, you know, made our program look huge some days, because 35 extra students would show up. But they were working hard, they were really into what they were doing, so kudos to those teachers who were instructing them. Here's some of those students at work, bigger kids. Not as cute, I didn't take as many pictures of them, they give you funny looks. Update to the program, this year we had the algebra class and the independent study, that was new. The coordinator being back in during the summer was additional. We had extra time for our translator. Patricia Harding did our translating this summer, and we were able to have her in more than we had in the past, which was huge, because in the past, we've had to wait to mail progress reports, because we didn't have a translator on staff. So they went out promptly this year, which was really great. And she worked really hard to get that done. So that was a huge task, and she did a really great job with it. The Eureka math program was new, people trying that out in their rooms. And this year was our second year with the buses, and I think this year it went, I think every year it will go more and more smoothly. This year it went really great. We had about 115 students on the bus, and that included the boost program. And I think the number actually went up, because on the first day, some kids were coming and begging for the bus. So that was the number before the extra seats were given. So it's really being utilized, and I think it's really important to get the students here. Even students who live on Cooper Farm were getting on the bus, and it was like, they're like, "My mom doesn't want me to walk from there," you know, summer traffic. So it's really great that we have the chance. And Linda did a great job making the routes, and, you know, making it work for everybody. So the bus, I think is another thing that's come from this meeting, as a suggestion, and it's really improved the program, and I think improved enrollment as well. So it's really important for a lot of families. So our boost program, I talked a little bit, but they're super cute, so I put some photos in it. They don't give you looks when you take pictures of them. This is actually kind of something neat. The books for, what is it?
The Harvey Foundation.
The Harvey Foundation, books for, what's the rest of that sentence? Books for something. The Harvey Foundation did this really great thing, and they came into the boost program, and all the students left with these bags. Like, the bags of books must have weighed more than some of these students, and it was really cool. The students were so excited to have them. So I've got a little picture of them all marching out with their books, but you should've seen the children's eyes light up.
For boost.
For boost.
Books for boost.
Oh, so the rest of it is, books for boost? Thank you. So obvious. Here's some more students working and reading. Some of them are doing their summer reading. Thing about jellyfish, is that what it was? They seem to enjoy that. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I want to, can you please remind me the dates, the five weeks that you ran summer school?
July 5th?
Okay.
Nope, sorry. July 10th.
July 10th.
To August 10th.
And how was your enrollment for CPS and high school attendance, I should say?
It varied. Basically, about 80% of students who say they're going to come, come. And the numbers that you heard today were, you know, students who came. So, and we always figure that when we're creating class sizes, and that's why, like, you'll see a class of 12 or so, because I invited about 20, about 18 said they were going to come, and then about 11 or 12 actually arrived. So attendance was, was pretty good. It varied. Some students went away, some students hit camps. Most of the attendance, most of those type of things were planned ahead. All the parents called and say, "Is it okay if they go to camp for a week?" For most students, we really want them at our program, so we make that work, and, you know, camps are important for them as well.
Well, I can imagine at the high school level, many students are wanting to be out in the workforce and...
Well, that's the great thing. It ends at noon, so a lot of students went to work after the fact.
That's great.
I know a lot of students left the math programs. Like, I saw them in the parking lot when I was crossing buildings, and I was like, "Where are you going?" And they're like, "Going to work, I'm going to build a pool."
Oh, wow.
So I was like, "Wow, that's quite a job."
Yeah, quite a day.
Yeah.
School in the morning, work in the afternoon. That's great.
Yeah, so the schedule definitely works for the high school students.
And for the middle school and high school students, they had the opportunity to work on their summer reading during the program?
It looked a little bit different this year. In the past, the goal was to get it done during the summer program. This year, they were supported to get it done.
Okay.
They didn't just sit and read, it was a lot of instruction surrounding it. So it was like a true reading lesson that you would have in school, a purpose for reading, and then time to read, and then a discussion, things like that, to help them along the way.
Thank you. One other quick question. Did you offer packets of math or questions to give to them after they finished on August 10th, to hopefully keep them motivated to continue to work on their...
I personally did not.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was something that we did to keep them going.
Generally, I know some special ed teachers at the elementary school, for students who cannot attend the program, they've given them packets and things to keep up their skills. But as part of the summer program, I have not given any.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. Any other questions? Sona?
Sorry. Couple of questions. I don't know. What is the overall, general feeling about the timing of the school? Because it's so close to the end of the prior school year, and then you have all that time or a month before the school year starts again. Is there any feedback in regards to that from parents, or even the students, as to how they feel about that?
We've tried to space it out pretty much in the middle of summer. There was about a week and a half before school, and then three weeks after the summer school session. Our thinking there is, we're trying to prevent regression. That was the original intent of the program. And that was one of the topics that came up in the discussions, about making it only five weeks instead of six, is like, is that going to be too much time for students to regress? But the way the holiday fell this year, and, well, the July being the holiday, we decided to experiment with it. So I haven't received any feedback from parents, either one way or the other.
And the students didn't seem to care.
No, they were pretty excited to have some time off. So, and I think for some of them, that they were like, "Okay." Like, summer reading, for example, "Okay, we, we got this far in our summer reading, I still threw weeks to finish it." So depends how, how they look at it, but...
If I may?
Sure.
I'm one of the proponents of five weeks instead of six weeks. Three days, six weeks, because I do think it gives them a little more time for summer to be summer. And we, we batted this around as an administrative team. There are arguments, probably both sides of that issue, but I think that, both in terms of hiring staff... But I think that both in terms of hiring staff, trying to condense the number of weeks but increase the number of days from 18 to 20 was, was a benefit that we, we thought worth trying. And I'm sure you can talk to different teachers who might see that differently. I would wager that most of the kids prefer the five weeks, four days a week to six weeks.
Housing definitely came into play for some of the staff.
That's true, too.
The five weeks helped out. We had a teaching assistant who actually was starting, she's from the cell, so she was starting school in a week into our program, like at the other, at the end. So she had to miss the last week in order to leave. So if it had been two weeks longer, it could have been even more problematic.
The other factor is trying to get the buildings clean. You know, having that extra week in the summer for Diane and her crew is critical to getting in there and making sure that we're ready to open on, you know, September 5th, arguably August 26th with, with staff.
Diane and her crew did a great job working around us. She was listing all the projects and I was like, oh yeah, we'd have to do that. Everything looked great over the summer. But, you know, I wouldn't say that we were in each other's way too much. We might've been in your way a little more, but, so...
I want to say thank you for offering the summer program. I want to add this and, you know, maybe there's been conversation about it with the administration and whatnot. And here I go dating myself. Back when I was in school, summer school was a kind of twofold. There's a need, those are the students that actually need it. And then there's the optional aspect. I remember taking summer school in high school for American Government, for example. It was a half-year course. I didn't want to take it during the school year because I wanted to do something else. I don't know, play basketball or something, I don't know. Is that something we thought about or is it a little too early in the game? That sort of optional thing?
I'll, I'll jump in and I think we would like to continue to build our summer program. I would like to see it offered, and I've said this before, for the other end of the spectrum, gifted students, not just all for remediation. And the, the hard part is though, if you're, if you're trying to offer it for high school credit, then you're, the seat hours, you have to have a lot more hours. And you might be taking one course for five weeks, but it might be three hours a day to try to get that in. And, you know, then you're looking for another level of expertise for that. But I, I would agree with you, I think it'd be nice to be able to offer that. I've always wanted to offer an AP class in the summer because I think it's tough. We're worried about kids taking too many AP classes in a year. So it'd be nice if they could take an AP class and just concentrate on one, like, take AP Chem. And offer that in the summer when they're not taking three others. The problem is that the testing, the AP testing does not match up with that. So you could take that course but not take the exam until the following, you know, April or May, John? Yeah. So it, it has challenges like that, but I, I think we would like to expand it. And in fact, with the algebra this summer, you could argue that we have expanded it, that that wasn't just remediation, that was to help kids, you know, go a step further.
Pauline? Just the only question other than, first of all, I love the bus, thank you, because I know that reduces barriers to many of our students. Can you just remind me the Algebra I, Part Two, and the Independent Study? What were the ages and grades of students that participated?
At least the 10th. I'm going to talk about that in my math report.
I thought you might. Thank you.
Tim?
I think this is a great idea and I like the idea of expanding it. I think that it's three hours the kids could waste. And I think we could really improve our offerings. I think it's tremendous what we're doing, but I think, as Zona said, I'd like to see maybe more exotic things or things that kids can't fit into their schedules otherwise. I mean, it's, it's a lot of time.
It is a lot of time.
For the kids to waste. And I think it's important to use all the time we can.
Absolutely, thank you. We normally don't take comments from the public after presentations or questions. Oh, okay, I will allow...
Is this program voluntary?
Voluntary for the students? Yes. Students are recommended by teachers or individualized education plans. But none of the students who were here this summer had to...
Thank you very much, Andrea, for your presentation and for all your help this summer organizing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Horton has a couple of videos to show, so I think it's best if the committee finds our way to the seats below. Thank you.
I am the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering and Math. Before I give you the Math Report 2, which is the second in a three-part series of Math Reports, I just called Andrea's PowerPoint back up because before I begin Part 2, I can give you kind of a report on what happened with Part 1 relative to Pauline's question. If you remember, the Math Report Part 1, early in the summer, was about the high school summer algebra program. And we had three different options. We had an online Keystone Math option. We had an in-person, actual class with 11 students aligned with the summer school hours. That's the three hours a day, four days a week for, for five weeks. And then I oversaw an independent study that grew to 35 students. It was 30 when I gave you that report. And I want to say that, you know, you've got 11 students here in Darren's class and I had 35. And then there's another four or five who stuck with the Keystone Math. The Keystone Math was something the students, you know, opted for on their own. And we've done some things in the past with, you know, summer credit and summer courses. And it was interesting how we started with 12 and we ended up with four. Eight students throughout the summer dropped out for one reason or another, for the online. And they either joined Darren's class, joined my class, or just said, you know what? This optional finishing Algebra I Part 2 isn't for me, I will take a full year of Algebra I. There's no urgency to take Algebra II sophomore year for, for AP Calculus. So it is optional. I'm glad that we did it. But it's, it's interesting to see, like, when we try to expand it with the online portion at all, it doesn't, doesn't always work, okay? On the positive of these students here, all but, but two, if you go up to 50, so you, all but two completed it, okay? So that's, what, 4%? So 96% of the students completed Algebra I Part 2 so they could take Algebra II this year as a sophomore. One student halfway through the Algebra I course decided that this wasn't for her and she would fall back into Algebra I full year. And that was the right decision for her, had a nice conversation with her mom. And another student, you know, went as hard as he could all the way through and, you know, he had homework and he, and he had some of those packets that you were talking about. You know, there was a lot of work to be done and he just didn't make the prerequisites. So right now, I'm working with Courtney Foster to make sure students are properly placed, you know, this year in Algebra I or Algebra II. Okay, so I just wanted to go back to this slide and talk about that. And then the other, just a clarification, is that that middle school model, this year, that instead of having one teacher for grade six who taught three subjects, we have the math teacher do the math and the ELA teacher do the ELA. And that made sense in terms of strength and departmentalizing, you know, subjects at the middle school. That was Donna Johnson's idea. So we need to give Donna Johnson credit for that, where students spent 90 minutes with Paul Bucary from Middle School Math and 90 minutes with Molly Madden from Middle School ELA, and then they switched, okay? So they were divided up into two groups and that, that did work really well as Andrea mentioned. All right, so Math Report Part 2. Okay, where are we? Here. Oh, back. So this is a focus on NES and NIS, okay? And Math Report Part 3 will be about the middle school math model and the changes from last year to this year. This report is about the new math resource for students in kindergarten through fifth grade. And as it is with many things, we're going to talk about the parent perspective in a minute and how rolling that out. Because if school can be members, you might have parents saying, hey, you know, what's this new math program? Or, you know, tell me more about this math program. So making sure you have some background here, I thought this would be the appropriate time to talk about this transition for NES and NIS. So Eureka Math, it's not that old, okay? It's only five years old. And it started as a partnership with Engage, with New York State Education Department and Great Minds, which was a nonprofit. If you remember back in 2011, the federal government, Barack Obama and Artie Duncan, put out a Race to the Top initiative. And school districts and teachers had opportunity to actually write model curriculum units. And every state did a little bit differently. And New York partnered with Great Minds, went to a nonprofit. And it was so well-received that like, other states were basically borrowing their materials and supplementing their teaching and resources with Engage New York. When Great Minds realized that that was happening, like, ooh, man, we have something here, they rebranded it and released it as Eureka Math. And what they did is they developed a very robust website, which I'm going to share in a minute, where everything is free, you can download a lot of the resources, all the, all the materials, free with an asterisk, meaning that, you know, if you want to print it out, have a hard copy, it's going to take time and toner and, and paper. So sometimes it might be better to buy a workbook or a textbook or a teacher edition. But they put together a really nice website that's completely free and it supports parents. I'll talk about that in a minute in terms of, you know, how is Eureka Math compared to Math Expressions, which, which has been our program at NES for the last six years. In 2015, you may have heard EdReports, it's a consumer reporting group for education. They gave Eureka Math the highest ratings for the Common Core State Standards Alignment. And I think it's important to take a look at this. You know, you hear it thrown out, but what exactly does it mean? What does it look like? So edreports.org, they, they do everything, comparing KDAE math materials, the shifts in the Common Core State Standards, our focus, coherence and rigor. You can go to these different tabs of how they rated all these different math resources. So what you can do at edreports.org, you can look at everything, you scroll down and obviously, you know, green is great and red not so much and yellow is fair to partial. So if you scroll down, and this is where Eureka got in the map. Some resources did not do so well. And Eureka Math did very well. And it's hard to see, it's not only green, it's like a perfect score, all right? 14 out of 14, 14 out of 14, this is by a grade level. Yeah, 13 out of 14 over there in grade six was something that was a little bit off in grade six, but tops, okay? And that really kind of put them on the map. For comparison's sake, Math Expressions here, a program we've had in place, Karen Fuston's program, a writer of Everyday Math who went out and partnered with Houghton Mifflin-Hartcourt to develop math expressions. It's not a bad program relative to Ed Reports. And if you talk to teachers and, you know, we're getting some results, you know, incremental results with math expressions. But it's interesting to note that in grade three, there was a yellow circle and it scored 11 out of 14. And I don't think it's any coincidence that actually the grade three teachers were the first teachers who started sniffing around Engage New York in supplementing their math expressions teaching with Eureka Math. So grade three found that parents actually preferred Eureka materials and the support and the website over Think Central, which is Houghton Mifflin's website, than, than Math Expressions. It actually made more sense to a lot of parents and it was really positive, okay? I'm putting this out there just because this Eureka Math initiative was not my initiative. It was not an administration initiative. It's, it's something that's kind of grown from, from the teacher ranks. Teachers have asked for it and we've kind of said, okay, you know, we'll, we'll support that, facilitate that and kind of help it along and see where it goes. Also keeping in mind, you know, it's new and what are the testimonies and the parent reactions and how much they're putting back, back into research and design. So Cara Carlson, grade five team leader, went to a Great Minds Institute for two days back in the, the summer of, actually, 2015. And she brought that back to the team and we talked about it. And she said, you know what, let's bring a Eureka Math presenter to the district. We brought a presenter and worked with teachers in grades five through 12 because coincidentally, at the same time, the high school math department was using Eureka Math as their primary resource for all their high school subjects except for calculus. Eureka does not support a calculus program. You can ask me questions about that later and I can answer them. But they go algebra, geometry, Algebra II, and pre-calculus for grades nine through 12. So Cara, you know, kind of went with grade five. Grade five started test driving a few units and started talking about, you know, for this coming year, grade three, like, so last spring, grade three said, you know what, we would like to make the switch to Eureka Math. We prefer it, we, we think we're, we're getting better results, it's, it's definitely having a better positive parent reaction, so we're all in. So I said, great. I went to grade five, saw Cara on the playground and said, what do you think? You know, we had the PD, some of your teachers tested over a few units. And she went and talked to her team for half an hour, came back and said, you know what, we're all in. So grade three, then grade five. And these dominos have started to fall. Went to Amy Knapp, the team leader of grade four at the time, said, hey, just want to let you know that grade three is going Eureka, grade five's Eureka, you know, what do you think? You want to stick with Math Expressions as your core resource? Because I'm ordering books, all right, for the, for the coming year. What about Eureka? Let me go talk to my team. We're all in. I said, great, okay? So the intermediate school, new year, new principal, new math program, new math resource, Eureka Math. So for this year, grades three, four and five, replacing Math Expressions, Eureka Math is the core resource, okay? Now, it's interesting because the plot thickens, all right? I submit these slides to Logan about a week in advance, okay? So this is about last Wednesday. And as of last Wednesday, one teacher in kindergarten scheduled a pilot Eureka Math. One teacher in grade two is piloting Eureka Math. And I had one teacher in grade one. And that was the plan with Kim and Nita, okay? It's like, all right, let's, let's slow our roll here, let's, you know, they haven't had as much experience with three, four and five. But I found out that grade one had a little bit more experience supplementing their, their teaching, their instruction materials with Eureka Math materials. So talking to the team leader, Karen Gottlieb, they actually couldn't decide who wanted to go to the summer PD and who wanted to pilot it. So literally five minutes before I clicked send to Logan, I got a, got a phone call from Kim saying, you know what, grade one is all in, they're going to go Eureka Math, okay? So now we've got one, we've got three, we've got four, we've got five. So we had a little PD overview of Eureka for those teachers who were piloting, as well as for the intermediate school that morning for, for three, four and five. And the kindergarten was going to have one teacher pilot, but then the co-taught teacher said, well, I'm going to be, you know, split between two rooms. And it's Math Expressions in one room and Eureka in the other room. It's going to be really complicated. So asked for permission from Kim, myself, you know what, it makes sense. Why don't the two teachers who are co-teaching in kindergarten go Eureka Math? It's what you guys want, right? Great, okay. Great, okay. So now two out of six kindergarten teachers are going Eureka Math. Then let it simmer, you know, 24 hours. Friday morning, I got a phone call from Kim saying, guess what? The kindergarten team wants to go all in for Eureka Math. That's not even in this slide because I've already pressed send at this point, okay? So as of this moment, we've got kindergarten, all six teachers, Eureka Math, grade one, all five teachers, Eureka Math, grade two, Jackie, five, team leader, is piloting Eureka Math. At best point, you know, look, let's not change the plan for Tuesday opening on Sunday night of Labor Day weekend, so let's slow down. But I wouldn't be surprised that, you know, by Christmas, New Year's, things are going well with Eureka Math, things are going well with the pilot, some of the teachers of grade two might start supplementing Math Expressions with some of the resources that Jackie has access to through the website. So it may be only a matter of time before K1, 2, 3, 4 and 5 are all Eureka Math. I've spent the day today actually packaging up and shipping Math Expressions textbooks to get full credit, okay? So we can actually purchase what we need for kindergarten and grade one. We did the PD last week because we knew about three, four and five and the piloting teachers. And then we have a plan. We basically have Susan Looney, math consulting on retainer for the year and she's scheduled to come on a half-day Wednesdays to work with teachers in grades three, four and five. And now I'm having to readjust that schedule to include K and one and Jackie. So it's very exciting and this is where we are, all right? So whenever you release a new program, it's a very important thing about the parent perspective and the parent point of view. Great Minds does this really well. They have a welcome video going to show you in a minute, there are parent tip sheets, there are homework helpers. Some are free, some are not free. The ones that are not free, we are purchasing for each grade level and they'll make sure that they get them home to the parents. And there's lots of research, testimonies, data, logs and more videos on their website. So if I can get this to work here, because I probably have it here. So what I did is I tested this out with my wife Samantha and I said, you know, hey, here's this website, you know, go to it. And I just kind of sat back and watched what she did, all right? Like what do parents do when they go to a website? So you got this filter here and this is greatminds.org, okay? It's Eureka Math's kind of parent organization, nonprofit location on the web. So she actually didn't mess around with this because maybe that looked like it was too much work or too complicated. So hey, you know, I know my husband talks about math all the time, so I'm just going to click on math. She clicked on math and then she saw, oh, I'm a parent, so she didn't even look at this. I don't think she looked at it, it was pretty quick. She just clicked on parents. And then this parent video comes up, okay? And you scroll down, there's all kinds of information about parent letters, parent tip sheets, accessing them in Spanish. And here, I'll just give you one example. Let's pick the hat and up for. So this is just an example of letters that teachers will be sending home this week or next week to say, hey, welcome to Eureka Math. What the letter does basically is really direct people to go to the website because since 2017, everything's online. And if you play around with the website, as I watch my wife, you end up with this kind of cool video, okay, which is just a little welcome idea to Eureka Math. And hopefully the volume is good, but just in case it's loud, I'll give you a little warning.
At Great Minds, we believe that every child is capable of greatness. That's why we created Eureka Math, a comprehensive math curriculum that helps children become not only literate, but fluent in mathematics. As a parent, you might notice that Eureka teaches maths differently than the way you were taught in school.
Previously, math was taught as a series of tables and rules that we had to memorize. But Eureka goes deeper. It goes into what is behind those tables and rules.
Eureka teaches students to not only learn the process for solving a problem, but to understand why that process works. One way this is accomplished is by following a logical progression from concrete to victorial to abstract. Eureka introduces mathematical concepts to students using real-world objects or situations. From there, a lesson transitions into even pictures and models such as ten frames and number bonds. When students are able to visualize math problems, abstract concepts are much easier to grasp. This ability to make visual connections also helps children to explain their thinking verbally. If your child needs any help, listen to his or her reasoning to see where the problem lies and be willing to follow the logic on the worksheet, which was written by experienced teachers who studied the most effective curricula around the world. Your child's teacher may send home module tip sheets and homework helpers, guides we've created for every homework page in the curriculum. These guides are also available in our Parent Resource Center.
Eureka makes math something that kids can really enjoy and understand and they will carry that with them throughout the rest of their lives. We want our kids to have every opportunity to be successful in school, college, career and life, and having a strong foundation in math will certainly help them get there.
With Eureka Math, your child will learn that math is fun and exciting and that excitement will help set them up for success because every child is capable of greatness.
So that's a nice little welcoming video to Eureka Math. So as I said earlier, the big three Common Core shifts, focus, coherence and rigor. Is there greater focus on fewer topics? These are some of the main reasons that Eureka scored so well with Ed Reports. Coherence, making topics and thinking at cross-grades, there's a lot of vertical alignment and progression. And then rigor, something that Eureka is known for is really pushing kids beyond the standards and going deeper into conceptual understanding, some abstract thinking and knowledge. Of course, there's a balance with procedural skills and fluency and you have to balance that with equal intensity. Eureka was written by a team of classroom teachers, coaches and mathematicians from all over the United States, completely deep-sighted progressions. Progressions is a document, you can find it, achieve the core, that's what the standards and new frameworks are written on. And this is just the asterisk because fluency is defined many different ways by many different departments and subjects. In this case, Eureka defines it as students expect to have speed and accuracy with simple calculations, teacher structure, class time and our homework time for students to memorize through repetition, core functions such as multiplication tables, so they're able to solve, manipulate, you know, brainstorm more complex concepts and problems. That is Math Report Two. As you heard, pretty excited about, you know, the momentum we have here at grades NES and NIS. I'll take some questions, comments?
Well, I just want to say I look forward to seeing the difference with my fourth grader.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see if I, as a parent, can see the difference between the two.
Come talk to me so I get some feedback.
I will, for sure, for sure. You can count on that. And does the district have a way to track families utilizing the website and inquiring or trying to get extra help? Can we somehow figure out how many families are actually logging in and using the resources?
Not to GreatMinds.org, but we are aware of the parents who request certain things in hard copy and say that they don't have access to it. So we know who those parents and families are and, you know, that's why we are printing and purchasing a lot of things out and it's still on the teacher to communicate with home. If you remembered two or three, maybe four presentations ago, we came back from NCTM in San Antonio, I talked about parent university, something I want to spin a little differently. Instead of the after-school tutoring program from 2:20 until 4 o'clock when kids are exhausted, what if we give them some time to go run around, exercise and come back at night from 5:30 to 7:00 and do some work at night? We reach out to the students who need to be there for extra help, we also provide food and the kick is we also have a teacher working with parents, educate the parents on, you know, they show them these websites and like, you know, what do you need? What are your questions? Do you know how to do this so you can help your own student? Okay, that's why it's called parent university. So there's kind of a focus on students getting extra help, but parents also staying a step ahead. And that will happen for fourth and fifth graders this year. And then we'll go from there, just like summer school, we'll start in one place and we'll see where it leads us in a couple of years.
Thank you very much. Zola, Holly?
I do, just a couple of questions. It's great to feel your excitement and passion, Michael. If I were to be in a classroom with students taking their math for Math Expressions versus Eureka, what would I see differently? I'm kind of curious, what's so different about Eureka? Have you been able to put your finger on what's getting everyone excited and having the results?
Right. So the big thing is how deep the problems go, that the problem's a little more complex, a little more rigor, okay? So, oh boy, people start getting anxious, you know, are students going to be ready for that, okay? But what's interesting is they're actually very similar. And when I showed the video to teachers, I asked them, okay, what'd you see, what'd you notice? Like, oh, I saw math mountains, you know, which is like this language in Math Expressions that no one understands because we even call it math mountain. So Eureka calls it a number bond, but still visual structure breaking apart or decomposing numbers into smaller partners. The ten frames are the same. There are a lot of things that are similar, okay? In terms of differences, Math Expressions is way more colorful at this point. Eureka is fairly basic, more drab pencil and paper. They're constantly working on beefing it up because like I said, it's only a five-year-old program and they're constantly putting new improvements, especially at the younger grades, which is why I think it's a good thing that grade two isn't quite jumping in yet because Math Expressions, you know, I think is getting some good results there at grade two. So you see a lot of similarities, but there's definitely a greater emphasis on solving problems and working through them, kind of a step-by-step process. And that might be why parents are warming up to it because it's a little bit closer to how we were all taught in school. And Eureka really talks about that balance. There's a lot less vocabulary that's, you know, from, you know, Math Expressions. There's more like consistent vocabulary that we were all exposed to.
And then just my last question, I'm assuming Looney Matt is familiar with Eureka, is the consultant coming in?
So Susan Looney, we've partnered with her in the past. We were lucky to collaborate with her because right after she collaborated with us, she was grabbed by the state to do a whole bunch of math PD workshops for schools in Level Three or Level Four through the district school and assistant centers. And just because she loves Nantucket, when I reached out to her, she said, sure. And she matched us up with a person who has already gone through an implementation phase for Eureka Math in other districts in the state, the most recent being Marblehead. But she's worked with a couple of the districts, so we're thrilled that her colleague Heather Johnson worked with us and I think she was pretty well received by the staff. It's interesting because she's done some implementation with grades three, four and five, but her roots are in primary. So when we had the afternoon, I kind of gravitated to the three, four and five teachers because that's been my, you know, realm in the last few years as assistant principal. And she kind of gravitated to the piloting teachers. Maybe I should give her credit, maybe she's the one that got them really excited for K and one going, you know, all in with the primary grades. So we're going to work out that schedule and that's the half-day Wednesdays.
Thank you all for seeing the results.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Any other presentations tonight?
I'm not a...
No, we have votes.
Can I shut this down?
Yes, thank you very much. All right, staying on track to committee discussions and votes to be taken. May I have a vote to approve the teacher collective bargaining agreement for 2017 through 2020? We all received that.
I'm going to accuse myself of this.
Thank you.
Move or approve?
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much. A vote to approve fiscal year 2018 district goals?
Move or approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I could, just, I have included in your packet the superintendent's performance goals, a draft, and you will see that they mirror the district goals. That's not something that you typically approve. I wanted to make sure that you had a copy of those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A vote to approve gift donation for new staff, gift certificates from Island Kitchen.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve August 15th, 2017 meeting minutes?
Move or approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve transfers and invoices. Oh, Zona, you have a question?
Just a minute. The reference to the vehicle, there's a period instead of a comma.
What line is this? I'm sorry, can you just tell me what line?
Line 22.
Thank you. Line 22.
So 26,000.
Oh, I see, 26,000.
Yes, thank you.
Already fixed, thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve transfers and invoices?
Approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report, enrollment update, please.
Yes, we sent you today the enrollment numbers. As of today, I will remind you and caution you that that's the first day enrollment and the state does not use that. They wait until October 1st because there's a sifting out. And also the kindergarten numbers that you see aren't set in stone because kindergarten hasn't started, but those are the registrations that we have. We have a total of 1644 in the district. It's interesting because the first thing that I did when I got this today was go back to the enrollment projections that I gave to you in November of last year to see, and this can be pretty embarrassing. It's not going to be, that's why I'm mentioning it. But the numbers that we had predicted were 350 in NES, but we knew that that was a little low because that was predicated on 100 kindergarten students and we weren't sure about that number yet. We predicted 378 at the intermediate school and we're at 382. We predicted 353 at CPS and we had 351 and 553 at the high school and had 544. So the overall, we predicted 634 students in the district, so being 10 off was pretty close. And that's the reason that I mentioned it.
And I have to tell you, I was in the high school. I was in the high school this afternoon. And there was another student coming to enroll.
Yeah.
After this came out to us. So I expect our numbers even going to get closer to our prediction or surpass.
Now, did you say kindergarten is or isn't in here?
Kindergarten is in there, but kindergarten hasn't started this year. So that will probably change. I saw in all of the schools, actually I wasn't, I didn't see it at CPS, but I know that NIS had some new registrants, NES had some new registrants. John said that there were five at the high school, so, you know, Peter's happy, he's got the no vacancy sign out. So, you know, so anyway, it's always an interesting thing.
Happy to hear.
The ribbon-cutting ceremony, several of you were there. It was a special moment for the community and we had over 200 people there, children and staff and dignitaries. And I thought it was a great event and the, there were a lot of oohs and ahs as parents and kids walked through the building. That's all well and good and it's a special time, it doesn't happen in everybody's tenure in a school district. in a school district. So that's really neat. But I have to say that the thing that I enjoyed the most today was walking through NES. It is a different place with only 350 students, and all of those students at the, developmentally at the same level. And it just really, that gave me goosebumps today, because, and we said that, and we hoped that, and we planned for that, but to see that and to hear teachers say the same thing to me today, and just saying, you know, it's just so calm. Not that it wasn't calm before, but, you know, with 720 students, there was, the action was constant in that school. So that was pretty special to me. I walked through the intermediate, the middle school, and the high school today, and, you know, it was really school in action. It wasn't all a first day, get to know you, there was learning going on, which is what you hope to see. So it was, that was great from my perspective.
I'd just like to say, sorry, I really urge all of our school committee members, my peers, to take a walk through the buildings and see, I know that you have students that have already graduated, and it's something to, a sight to see. I definitely feel like I'm a little detached from NES now that I no longer have a student in NES, but I'm looking forward to walking through and seeing the changes, and I hope you guys have the opportunity to as well.
Just to add to President Moore to get a chance to sit in on classes, I did that last year.
Absolutely.
I didn't get to the high school, and I hope I would be okay to come in this year, but it was tremendous to be able to sit through pre-K all the way through eighth grade. I appreciated all the teachers that allowed me to come in, but it really gives you so much more of a feel than just hearing presentations at the table.
I think it's so important, and there are so many new staff members and faces, it's a great opportunity to get to meet some of these important people working with our students.
Yeah. It was fun to pop into a new teacher's room. I try not to go in and stay, because that can be a little daunting for a new teacher, but it was fun to see them. And I think we have a great new group in all buildings, and I think that the staff is stronger, stronger than ever. So a lot of kudos to the staff and to the administration. It was a great day.
Thank you.
And then finally, the horizon, we're in pretty good shape. We'll have budget calendar and budget directives at the next meeting. We'll give you a first look at a first draft of the school calendar for 1819. The community school will report at the next meeting about their summer programs. I'm sure that Caitlin will touch on summer boost, but also the summer camps and ACT Venture. And I'm thinking that on the policy, on the bidding requirements, it might be good, and I mentioned this to Jen earlier today, to have Diane and Martin meet with the policy subcommittee first. So I think we'll try to do that before we bring it to the school committee. And then, you know, October, we'll have an ESL update at some point. School improvement plans are being worked on with school councils, and they'll be coming to you sometime in October.
Remind me, what did we decide about the school calendar? For two years or so?
Yeah, well, we try to, try to get two years ahead, so that people who are planning vacation, vacations can have that, in this case, the 1819 calendar. It's hard to get too far ahead, because you never know what the state's going to throw at you, and you don't know what collective bargaining impact might be.
So when you say that, you mean 1819, 1920?
So we will present to you 1819. If we could do 1920 started in the spring, that's probably what we would do.
I'm just wondering, with the community school summer program update, if Caitlin would also be able to provide us some insight on the field assignments, and how that's going with the turf fields, and how it's going with all the different organizations, and just give us an update on that? That would be great, thank you.
That's all.
All right, so we will work on getting a policy subcommittee meeting together. And school council, Natalie, can you give us an update on the first day of school?
It was good.
Good.
We had a lot going on, but it was good. We'll get back in the spring, but it feels like we never left, so.
Really?
I heard there was a great assembly and kickoff, and do you want to defer to Natalie?
As one of the speakers, yeah.
Yeah. What did you have to say to the students at the assembly today?
Well, my co-speaker and I were actually unaware of our speaking until about five minutes before, but...
Well, impromptu, that's a good skill for college, right?
But it went, I think it went okay. We just did a welcome, and then the teachers were great, had some great words to say. We have the inspiring piece of that, but my friend Caroline is the class president, so we just did a quick welcome, but I think it went well.
Great.
A lot of new staff that we didn't know about. It was nice to be able to hear about all of it, so it's exciting.
And you've got an easy senior year of something?
Easy, I don't know what easy, but...
Challenging.
Exciting. Look forward to it.
And I was at the freshman orientation, and I was very impressed at the involvement from the upperclassmen. I think it's a great program you guys have started to help make our incoming freshmen feel more comfortable and welcome on their first day of school.
We're super excited about that. I was really happy that Mr. Supa actually started it.
Can you tell the committee a little bit about it? Because I'm not sure we were aware before.
We call it freshman advisory mentors, or FAM, kind of like family. And Mr. Supa approached me wanting to get me involved and kind of tied in with our student council a bit, so we have all of our members involved, but we really try to just, we paired up senior and freshman advisories, so they're going to be meeting, I think we're trying for like four or five times a year, just to, you know, talk, talk about things coming up, like big events, just about high school, you know, prepare them for what's coming, and, you know, be open for questions and anything, and really ultimately build those like relationships, make the age gap a little... I mean, I already think it's gotten a lot better. I think we're getting closer.
That's good, that's what we like to hear. Thank you. Thank you very much for your involvement, and that was great to see as a parent and a school committee member. Thank you. All right. Sure, yes.
It's only been a handful of people, because I haven't been out that much, seeing so many people in this last week, but the conversations I've had with our teachers, I will say that every single one has mentioned how promising and supportive the back-to-school training days for the teachers were. I asked kind of specifically what was different, what's different. Couldn't really put their finger on it necessarily, but the energy is positive, and they're feeling sort of excited for the new year, so I just wanted to say that. So thank you to our administration.
Thank you. And if I can just add one more thank you. We have such a supportive community, and I just would like to publicly thank Lisa Weisentainer and the Nantucket Cycling and Fitness for offering free pre-season training for NHS students, our athletes, to maintain their physical fitness before the season starts. So I just want to publicly thank Lisa Weisentainer and Nantucket Cycling and Fitness. And Chris Beeby, I think, also helped with some personal, some training, yes. So thank you very much. And we're so fortunate to have such an amazing community, so willing to give in our busy season, when everyone's working, working so hard, and, you know, to still think of our students, so thank you. All right, any other comments?
Do you remember the subcommittee?
The subcommittee for policy or strategic?
Teacher negotiations.
Teacher, oh.
Sorry, teacher, yeah, teaching assistant.
Yes, so they're, the committee talked about substituting for Zona somebody else on the TA negotiations, because she is going to be on the strategic planning committee. So I can't remember, was it Melissa?
I think it was Melissa.
I think it was Melissa.
It was at the...
She's not here.
Let's wait.
Well, that does it. She's on the... I think it was Melissa, I will check my notes on that.
Actually, so we're talking about committees, I know I had offered to sit in on the strategic plan, did I, am I?
I have you, you too. Yeah.
Just to confirm that.
Perfect, thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much for coming out tonight.